Our work session for August 4th, 2025, and I'll turn this over to our manager to update us on what the topic is.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members, general public. Thank you for coming in this morning. So this is our second department that we're bringing through, reminding the council that you'd asked for an opportunity to hear from all our outward-facing departments with the service levels they provide to our residents, acknowledging that as a city with 1,700 full-time employees, that we provide services through 15 different departments. And at last count, we were approaching 250 different services to our local residents and businesses. I think this morning, we've got Public Works, and you're going to find that they have one of the largest and broadest responsibilities when it comes to providing services. And so we thought we'd leave this as the only topic this morning and give them the full time. So I think with that, I'll bring Jonathan up, and we'll go from there.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. Jonathan Gano, Public Works Director. The joke this morning was, we're going to talk about something about Public Works, and I answered back, you know, we're going to talk everything Public Works, and nothing but. We are most commonly associated with snowplows and pothole patching, but we offer a lot more services. And since you all hear me talk a lot, most of the talking today will be done by the Division Administrators for the six work groups that comprise Public Works. So we'll get right into the meat of it here. But I do want to launch the plaudits of our staff. We are an award-winning, internationally accredited department led by some of the leaders of the profession in each of these, in their various respects. And I'd like to start off by introducing the Sewer Operations Division led by Mr. Steve Johnson.
Good morning, Mayor, council. I'm Steve Johnson, Sewer Operations Administrator. I work with Jason Underwood, who is my operations manager. When we are fully staffed as a division, we have 93 people, and that's in the summertime, and it includes seven-month laborers. Starting out, we have our sewer cleaning division, which we have six of those combination vectors, which you can see on the combination trucks, we can see on the screen right there. We also have one truck that is just a jetter that's heated. We use that for emergency responses. Well, we use it for more than that, but the reason we got a jetter with the heaters in the wintertime. They also have two complaint factor, or two complaint trucks, which basically look like big bread trucks. They go around. They're the ones that are first on the scene. If there's an issue, they're the ones that go up through the investigation. And they also have what's called an easement machine, which is basically a pull-behind jetting machine for all those hard-to-reach areas around the city, around the metro area, actually. Next is our sewer inspections. Now, these ones, this is kind of a, this section's kind of a conglomeration, which I don't think is a word, but it's a bunch of, we have locators in here. We have our Public Works assistants, which are night watchmen. And also, like, we're here, we have Joe Ernst. We have three sewer television trucks. Just what it is. It's a little robot that crawls through the sewers, tells us what's wrong with the sewer, tells us if it's good or not. Next is our construction team, more commonly known as manholes and intakes. Basically, that's what they do. They repair manholes and intakes. We have four teams of three, and also we have a manhole lining machine. And what that, it's a spin caster. It's a, it just floats down, on a wire, floats down the manhole and spins, and covers a manhole of concrete, and extend the life of the manhole by about 50 years, and ends up being about a quarter inch thick. They go around. It's kind of a proactive thing. They go around, find old manholes, make them new again. Next is our breakdowns. They repair breakdowns, lack of a better way of saying it. They're the ones that, they dig down to the pipes, repair them. We have three crews consisting of a lead sewer maintenance worker, a maintenance worker, a truck driver, and a heavy equipment operator. They go around, they make the repairs. But they're also responsible for a few other things, such as in this picture, laying riprap, cleaning out ditches after big rain events, that kind of stuff. Another thing that they do is the flood preparation. That's one of our, one of our backhoes. That's over by, that's the enclosure, the, can't even think right now.
Say the word.
What's that?
My brother.
Yeah, my brother. Thank you. Words are hard this morning. So, but they exercise that every year, just to make sure it works. This one, as Patrick will talk about, we'll have another one of these over at George Fly here next year, too. Flood response is another thing we do. That, after a rain event, or even just bypass pumping, they'll set up those trash pumps, those six-inch trash pumps around the city. That's a combination of both our breakdowns and construction crews that do that. Pump station crews, we have, what did I say, 71 pump stations, both sanitary and sewer, are sanitary in storm across the metro area. They're responsible for all the maintenance of those, to make sure that it keeps flowing. If it's sanitary, it's flowing to WRA. If it's storm, making sure it goes to the river.
How many do you have?
Seventy-one across the metro area. I have the breakdown here. I have it here, written down. There's 31 of those are storms, storm pump stations, 24 are sanitary stations, and 16 are WRA stations. And then we also have 21 miles of levee that we maintain with these really cool slope mowers. Some of our new initiatives we have going on in the sewer division. This one, we've been working with the PIO office. Yusuf there's been, he's a gem. He really is good at his job, and he's very fun to work with. But basically, educational, they put out these videos. It's root cutting. This is on Facebook. And they put the camera in, in front of the root cutter, come together. Now, the root cutter is a spinning deadly thing of blades coming through, literally cutting up the roots. And we put our really expensive camera right in front of it. So the coordination there was pretty good. But it's an awesome video that they put out. It kind of shows you what they do, and how they do the inspections, what they're looking for. Educational for the public to see, when they see a TV truck sitting outside of their house, they know what we're doing. We're looking at the cameras, and they also see the combination truck there, too, knowing that we're actually out there cleaning, making it better for them. A flood committee is new this year. Streets was very proactive. A couple of years ago, it started a snow committee. It's basically comprised of their own employees. We decided to do the same thing with the flood committee. We looked for volunteers, people interested in how to do, how do we better prepare for floods. We had like six or seven people volunteer, and part of that is just kind of getting going with that. But it allows more interaction with the people. Instead of Chad or myself just saying, hey, this is what we're doing, it's the employees saying, hey, you know, would be a good idea, let's try this. And so we're doing that. That was a really good idea. We're also, this is a picture of a new service we're having for our utility locators. We go through about 48,000 locates each year. For my four locators, that keeps them quite busy. What they've been doing up to this point is they've been printing off every ticket as it comes in. And so we go through a lot of paper and a lot of printer cartridges. This new system is going to be all digitized. So it all comes to that. It automatically divides it out by my four locators, as far as their area of town, and it actually maps it out for them, too, as far as what's going to be the most efficient way to go through town and do the locates. So it's going to save them a ton of time and save us a ton of money in the long run. As far as sewer cleaning goes, this is, we have, like I said, we have seven, or six trucks, and they're each assigned their own area of town. It used to be just divided by roads, as far as where they go, roads and I think the interstate, which is a road. But they, that's how they do it. Now, after a little more thought process with Patrick and Jason, it's more by the watershed, or the sewer shed, as far as how they're doing. So now they're cleaning the sewer from top to bottom, from the very smallest pipes all the way to the big pipes before it goes WRA. It's a more thoughtful process. It's more efficient. It allows us to give a better cleaning of the system itself. So with that being said, I will be followed by Joe Farrell on the sanitation.
Thank you.
Morning, Councilman Mayor. I'm the sanitation administrator. I have three divisions. I have garbage, I have street cleaning, and I have the call center for the department. And which one of these? I can't see.
The right one.
Okay, good. The garbage crews, they run around six, let's see, that's how I do this. They run, we have about 6,500 customers every week. So they basically touch everybody in the city. So we always, we do a good service. I have a Pwam under me, and he manages this, there's three section chiefs under, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I have three section chiefs under me, under the Pwam. One section chief, he manages the recycle team. We have seven trucks out every week, because it's biweekly. We have, the other two section chiefs, they manage property cleanup, the bulk waste, the garbage, special collections. And we have a fleet of 26 ASLs, which are the side loads that you see every day out there picking up. We have six front loads. We use those for yard waste and bulk waste, municipal garbage we pick up around the city. We have six rear loads, which we use primarily for yard waste and property cleanup. And we have a grapple truck, which we call in to do metal, which is our appliances. We usually use that to pick up from the side of the street there. Recycle, what did I do wrong? Okay. Last fiscal year, we picked up 6,400 tons of recycling. So that's pretty good. We hire five summer hires every summer, and what we do with them is they walk the street and they look in everybody's cart. They're our recycle auditors. And that both helps encourage people to become a gold lid recycler, which we call the super recyclers. And also, it lets us pull the people that are really contaminating our loads, because one garbage can full of contamination ruins the whole truckload at the center where we drop. Yeah. So our big thing is to try and reduce all that contamination and educate everybody. So far to date, we've picked up 614 toders from people because they just wouldn't comply.
We've did much better, you know, from Metro Waste Authority standards. We did so much better, is what I understand, as being on the board of the contamination.
We're trying. I mean.
It's dropped tremendously. It's been good work.
We're doing better, right, but we're not doing as well as the suburbs in terms of percentages, right?
I really, I don't know what their percentages are. I know ours have gotten better.
Much better.
Yeah. Yeah. Theirs are all picked up by contractors, so I don't know how they do their numbers. And then we have our scrub program, which is very successful. We have nine scrubs a year. Five of them are mega scrubs. And at the mega scrubs, we have extra, we have shredder out there to shred documents. We have, new last year, our e-waste. So if you have computers and things like that, you can bring that all in. And then we have hazardous waste, and that truck usually fills up. And we're working on getting a bigger trailer for that. So last year, we picked up 752 tons of yard waste just from the scrub and 826 tons of garbage. So that's a lot of stuff that didn't end up on the streets that we were chasing. Street cleaning crew, they, this crew cleans 2,200 lane miles every year. They clean every city street five times a year, and the downtown loop, they clean 26 times a year. And I have, we have 12 of these sweepers in the fleet. We have a night shift and a day shift. So the night shift gets into those places like downtown where people aren't around, so they can get in there and clean. Street cleaning also steps up when we have storm debris. They're the ones that start the ball rolling as far as getting things going, to get things collected. We have a call center of seven people. Last year, they took 63,000 requests for service for the Department of Public Works.
They do a really good job.
Yeah, they're a good crew. Our newest initiative, I'm sure you've all heard about our electric truck. It's a beast. But we use it for, right now, we're using it for every stream. Like, one week, we may run garbage. One week, we may run yard waste. Just to see, we're still feeling it out, to see where it's going to fit better because of the battery capacity. It does have regenerative braking. And so we have one driver that's really good about figuring out all the little crazy things that make it extend out the battery life. But it is a nice vehicle. It's very quiet. Nobody hears it coming, and it's completely zero emissions.
What was the term you used about braking? I'm sorry.
Regenerative. So every time you brake, you're charging the battery.
Oh.
Yeah. And since that's all they're doing, is stop, 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 that helps, helps charge the battery, but, yeah.
So is it making through a full route yet?
I'm sorry.
Was one of the problems that was not making through a full route?
We did have a couple of problems. It depends, you know, yeah, in a nutshell, yeah. If they have to come from the far end of the city and go clear out, like, our yard waste, we had one day where it made it almost down the ML King, and it died.
So when it dies, how long does it take to recharge?
Well, we have to have it towed. But we have figured out, that was the first time, and like I said, we're learning how to use this. And also, there's a Hy-Vee, unpleasant hill, there's Hy-Vee's around the city that actually have a charging station. So our drivers know that if they're at a certain percentage, they need to stop and take half hour or hour to charge it back up. And then that just saves us having it run down.
Is it able to fully charge over anything?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the battery's about this big, the battery pack.
It'll hold its charge even when it's really cold throughout, almost the entire day?
It's, so far, it seems to have. We haven't had the cold affect it. But, you know, like I said, we're still learning, moving it around.
That's fantastic.
And then we have the recycle audits, which I already touched on a little bit, but these are our recycle helpers. They go down the street, and it's really helpful for us on reducing our contamination. We're going to be piloting a new program with a smaller cart, this 33-gallon cart. We're thinking that maybe sometimes the elderly have a little problem, maybe, you know, they're pretty big carts. So we're hoping that maybe this will help them. It's a smaller footprint. It's going to be a reduced cost, and for anybody can use it. And also, by using less garbage, we're going to be encouraging them to recycle more. So it's been a win-win for us if we can get it, get people to use that.
You still have the program where, for the elderly or disabled, if you're not able to bring the cart down to the curb, we'll go pick it up.
Yeah, that's what we call our special collections. Yeah, the drivers do walk up to the house, and they pull the cart down to the street. And so then they dump it, and then the next guy, they'll pull both carts, you know, and the next guy comes, he dumps it, and then he walks it back up.
And how do you qualify for?
They have to be disabled, and we do ask for like a doctor's note or something saying. I mean, if, and we do an interview to fill out the application. And our section chiefs, you can tell if a person's going to have troubles, or if they're going to fall down some steep driveway or something, and we're going to do what we can to accommodate them. We don't want them out there falling down.
So for the people at home, how, if they didn't know about that, how do they get that? Do they call the call center?
Yes. That's where it starts. They can just call and say, hey, I need, I think I need special collection, and it'll just roll up from there. We'll set up a personal interview with the section chief and go from there.
Maybe at some point in time, we can put that in our newsletter of some sort. I think that's a.
We could. Yusuf back there? It's on the website, though, I believe. At least on our website. This is the B-100 program, about four years now. We had a company come in, and we had them fit 21 of our side load trucks to run on biodiesel fuel. And what they did, they cut our gas tanks in half on all these trucks. So half of it holds bio, half of it holds diesel. So like, when it's really cold, you can start the truck up on diesel, get it warm, and then switch it over to bio. The good thing about the biofuel is that it reduces greenhouse gases and emissions by 86% when they're running on that biodiesel. So that's probably a pretty good program for us. We haven't had any problems. There's other cities using it. The DOT in Ames run all their snowplows on it, because that was a concern. Don't have any problems in the cold. And then we have three technologies for our street sweeping division. We have the manual sweepers, which I showed you earlier, which ones you probably see the most of. We have another one that's called a Pure Air, and it has an 18-inch head on it, and it's for permeable surfaces, and it works really well. But the problem is, it's got such a small sweep that it's back and forth, back and forth. So it takes a long time to do that, but it's good for the permeable surfaces. This one is our regenerative air sweeper. It runs air, it downblasts the air, and it blasts it back up, and it carries it into a hopper. And the nice thing about it is, is it doesn't emit any dust. It doesn't emit dust either into the air or debris back onto the ground. So the nice thing about it is it's a full sweep. You know, they can just go one path, and then down another path, and they're done. Then we have one of those right now. And I am done. And Scott Hutchins is going to be, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Scott Hutchins. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director and also the WRA Director. And I'm going to here to tell you a little bit about the WRA. So as most of you know, the WRA is a, has 18 member communities throughout the metro. We serve about 550,000 people, 21 board members, and it's a 2080 organization. And the City of Des Moines is the operating contractor, which means that the City of Des Moines has hired, or the WRA has hired the City of Des Moines to run and operate the WRA. All the employees out there are WRA, or City of Des Moines employees. This is our treatment plant. It's located at 3,000 Vandelia Road. Some of you have been out there, and we're probably going to offer tours eventually to go out there in the short time this fall. And if anybody wants to come out and tour the plant, it's changed a lot probably since you've been there. It treats about 65 million gallons a day. We get about 70 truckloads of hauled waste coming through the facility that generates about $2 million in revenue. And these come from all over the state and even the Midwest to dump their, it's specialized waste that we, and then it goes into our digesters and creates some biogas for us. We have about 120 employees when we're fully staffed. We have six divisions, operations, maintenance, engineering, finance, IT. We have a safety, a full-time safety professional, and we have a full lab out there. This is our conveyance system, so it just shows that we go all over the metro, of course. We have 164 miles of trunk sewers, and these are the main sewers that go through the communities. Each community has its own separate collection system that feed into this trunk system. As you can see, we go clear out the Waupiki, up to Grimes is the last city that has joined the WRA back a few years ago. Polk City, Bondurant, Altoona, all the way down to Norwalk, south of Norwalk. We have a facility down there, a detention basin south of the city limits there. And we have 11 pump stations, and we have five equalization basins. This is our operations, folks. We have 35 employees in operation. It's a 24/7 operation. So when we're all enjoying our times with our family and friends during holidays, there's folks here running the treatment plant, making sure it is operational during those storm events and during the holiday season. We have about, like I said, 70 truckloads of hauled waste. It does generate about $2 million worth of revenue for us. Also, operations staff and the WRA folks, we got a NACWA Peak Performance Award for five, it's a platinum award, for five consecutive years of complying with our permit. No permit violations for five consecutive years. So we're proud of that and proud of the folks that run the treatment plant. Another part of the operations staff is our biosolids. So we create about 88,000 wet tons of biosolids a year, and we have to get rid of it. And the plant field services crew, there's about 14 folks that run the plant field services crew. And we apply 88,000 wet tons on about 2,000 acres. So we spread mostly during the spring and the fall, and sometimes that gets us into a bind because if we have a wet spring or a wet fall, we have problems getting rid of it. But eventually, we'll get rid of it. Our barn is pretty much full right now, but as soon as the corn comes out, we're going to hit it hard and get it spread on farm fields across the central Iowa.
Are we testing our biosolids for PFOS?
Currently, we do not.
You do not?
Right.
Is there a reason we're not doing that?
We're not required to, and we haven't been advised by our attorneys to do that. So we are not, we are not currently testing for it. We might currently in the future, though, because in 2026, we're going to have to, I believe, we're going to have to start testing for it, but we haven't yet.
I mean, they're taking farm fields out of production based on, at least in some places, based on the biosolids having high levels of PFOS in it.
Right. And I mean, it's a very, there's a lot of talk about it in the national organizations, and we're following all the guidelines that we are required to do right now. We have tested in the past, but this was before the proper testing rules were implied. So probably in the future, in the spring of '96, we'll probably start testing for that, NRF one, so. Okay. The maintenance division is 41 employees in the maintenance division. We have mechanics. We have gas-powered mechanics as well. We have HVAC technicians. We have painters, carpenters, electricians. We try to do all our own maintenance. This is a picture of them working on one of our six main pumps, which you can see there. It's a big industrial facility, so it's a lot of hard work done by our maintenance staff. And they're all skilled crafts, folks that work there in the maintenance department. This is our laboratory. We have a full-service lab. They do a variety of tests to make sure that we remain in compliance with our permit. Like we said, we had five years of no violations with our permit. There's seven employees there. We run an industrial pre-treatment program through there, so there's, some industries have to pre-treat their wastewater before it comes to the treatment plant. So we have to go out there and make sure they're doing their part to make sure they're pre-treating that before it gets to us. Also, the fog ordinance, the fat oils and grease, the restaurants, the food service establishments, there's over 2,000 food service establishments throughout Des Moines and the metro area. They periodically get inspected. Our folks do that to make sure that their fog devices are running properly as well. And that's a picture of our final product coming out of the pipe at the end of the process. So looking at some of our initiatives, this is the Birdland Pump Station, which is now completed. It was completed this year. It was about a $19.5 million project. As you can see, it kind of looks like, you can see where they have bricked-in windows. So we worked with the neighborhood to make sure that it's architectural, will fit into the neighborhood. the neighborhood. So it looks like an old building that they bricked in the old, old windows, but that's a brand new facility. It replaces the old Birdland Pump Station. And it absolutely, it eliminated one of our CSOs at the Birdland, at the old Birdland Pump Station. So now we pump all that flow to the treatment plant and there is no combined sewer overflow at this location. Next project, a lot of, most of you are aware of, is the Ingersoll Run Project. That's the one that tore out the northbound lanes of MLK all the way from the river, all the way up to 16th and then around Exile Brewery and up around the old Tech High Building up in that area. This project is now complete. It's about $36 million. There was three phases and it was completed, actually it was, the MLK structure was completed early and this also eliminated one of the CSOs at 22nd High and it was the last CSO in our consent decree. We were mandated by a consent decree to eliminate our CSOs and this is the last one. We do have one permitted one that's out at the treatment plant, which is allowed at our combined sewer solid separation facility. So that was a big milestone to get, that's been about 10 years, 10, 12 years to eliminate all the CSOs in conjunction with working with the City of Des Moines and getting those all eliminated.
And Scott, a CSO is?
A combined sewer overflow. This is our new personnel facility location, so we have a new facility plan. And as our treatment plant and WRA grows, we need more, we need more space out at the treatment plant. The treatment plant, as you can see, is a long, narrow footprint. We need more space to put in process-related facilities. And to do that, we need to move all the administration and the personnel facilities to another location. So this is just to the north of the treatment plant. This is, if you're familiar with Don's Auto Salvage, with Brady Trucking and with Apex Oil, we have now purchased those three properties and we're just getting started designing a new facility so we can move our personnel facilities to this facility. It's going to be about a $40 million project. It's hoped to be completed sometime in probably 2029. This is another big project. This is an aeration basin project. It's going to be about $40 million. It's additional treatment, so as the communities and the metro grows, we need to be ready to be able to treat. And this treats a lot of nitrogen and removal for us. So it's a new project. As you can see there, we're going to have new blowers, which is the cutout in the building there. And then on the perimeter of this building, we have to add some tankage to make sure that we are ready to treat that waste. This is a phosphorus recovery project, so part of the nutrient reduction strategy was removal of phosphorus and nitrogen. This is going to remove some of the phosphorus from our waste streams. This is about a $45 million project. So it removes that phosphorus in that reactor there, that red vessel there. It pelletizes the phosphorus and we're able to get some revenue from that. So we're proactive. It's not mandated currently by our permit, but we know it's probably coming. So we're proactive, so we get out ahead of this and it does help us in some maintenance problems because phosphorus and some other chemicals create struvite, which kind of puts a calcification inside of our pipes and we won't have to buy other chemicals to remove that. This process will help remove that, plus it'll generate a little bit of revenue for us.
Scott, what, what do the phosphorus levels get down to when you're, after the phosphorus removal? How much is left in the stream?
After, I'd have to look, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that for you. So I'll have to look that, I will look that up and get that back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'd be curious, what kind of standard could you meet if, if you have that treatment?
Yeah. I think we get down to there, but I can't remember off the top of my head and I didn't look that up and it's been a while since I looked at that report, so I will get that for you. This is our renewable natural gas, or RNG. So we take our biogas, this project's been online since October of 2020. So we take, instead of flaring our biogas now, we treat it to natural gas grade. We then inject it into the natural gas pipeline and distribution system. We can produce enough natural gas to supply about 5,500 homes a day, or yeah, a day. And when that gets injected, it generates about $6 million worth of revenue for, gross revenue for us a year. So it's a very good project for us, both on the green side and actually produces some revenue for us. It's a $20 million project and it paid back in about four, four to six years for us. So it was a very good project.
Does it completely eliminate flaring?
No, because we're currently producing more, we're getting more hauled waste in, so we, on occasion, we do flare because we're just overproducing and the system is not big enough to do all that. So we do see some flaring. If you drive down there, you might see some flaring. Other times you might see some flaring as if we're ever doing maintenance and we have to shut the system down. But right now, we don't have a big enough system to handle all the gas to treat. We wish we would have built about 25% bigger, but there is all kinds of constraints, cost constraints and just capacity there, so. So this is our conveyance system capacity. So this is a project actually out, down there in the lower, lower right is Des Moines and then you go through, you go through Windsor Heights, Clive, Urbendale and the green line is the, is the line going up to, to Grimes. But that line, the red, yellow and purple all has to be parallel to make sure we have enough access to supply enough capacity to the western suburbs there. As I said, down to the lower right is Des Moines and there's some work being done there. That is the, that project is the joint common trunk and it's just getting started. It's three phases and it'll be completed in about 20, 30. There's another project that goes in the front of County Soccer Complex that's just getting started. That gives us more capacity on that sewer as well. The common trunk project is about an $81 million project and the southern tier project is about a $20 million project.
Scott, did you say there were like three or four of those districts? There'd be one to the south of that, there'd be one over to the east. That's just one conveyance?
Yeah, that's just, that's just one conveyance, that's just one, it's called the joint common trunk and then everything feeds into it. But it goes through like the Clive, we've been working with Clive because it's, it goes through the Clive Green Belt, which they're, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing everything right for them through that park, just like when we go through one of our parks or we've gone through West Des Moines Parks. We got to work with their parks department to make sure that we're doing everything proper there. But it will add capacity to the Urbendale, Clive, Windsor Heights and some of the western suburbs, so. Now we have Patrick Bean coming up for the Clean Water Division. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mary Boson, council members, thanks for this opportunity to come talk about the great work that Public Works is doing. I'm the Clean Water Program Administrator. I'm kind of the small engineering division within Public Works. Previously, it was the Sewer Enterprise Division. For those who've been around for a while, this got a name change when I started with the work with the city. I manage the, both the storm and sanitary utilities with about 10 staff in my division. We have a couple interns during the summer and nine full-time during the rest of, rest of the year. Couple things that we're out there doing, really focused on public education. For the longest time, sewers were out of sight, out of mind. Didn't really want to talk about them, people didn't want to think about it. I flushed the toilet, stuff went away. That's all I want to know. So we're trying to get out there for both the storm and sanitary utilities to let people know what we're doing. They pay money into the utilities every month. What value are they getting for that? And so we are out there doing public education on service we provide, information on things they can do on their private property and then just other things that the city's doing, whether it's projects or programs or different things. One of those programs, or we actually have two programs, two rebate programs, one being our private property protection program. That one's more focused on the sanitary sewer side. That's focused on areas of town where we have maybe sewer pipes that are either under capacity or when it rains, they get filled up with infiltration, inflow, that groundwater or surface water that gets into the sewers and eats up capacity. Some of that comes from public sources like open manholes or, you know, cracks in the pipe, but some of it comes from private residences. And so anytime you have an older neighborhood that's got downspouts that still run down and tie into the sewer service line, or you got sump pumps that are pumping in there, that just eats a lot of capacity during those rain events and even when it's not raining, we're still treating all of that groundwater and surface water that doesn't need to be treated per permit. So we actually allow folks in those areas to put in a backflow valve so they don't get flow backing up into their basement. And then we also then support the installation of sump pumps that disconnect those places where just groundwater collects, whether it's from a foundation drain or other sources, and then discharge it back out into the environment. Sometimes it's onto the ground, sometimes it's into a subdrain that's behind the curb that actually just goes into our storm sewer system. So both of those are great efforts with that program. The other one is our Stormwater Best Management Practices Program. That one's really focused on promoting private stormwater practices on private property. So rain barrels, rain gardens, like you can see in the picture here, permeable pavers, stream bank stabilization, lots of different applications that could be used. That's not going to solve everything, but that's a way to kind of do some distributed stormwater management in a bunch of different locations. One rain barrel doesn't really do a whole lot, but if I have a neighborhood where I have 100, you're starting to get to some, some reasonable storage volumes at that point. We're also responsible for project and program development. One of our main tasks is kind of that long-term planning for the storm and sanitary utilities. I know I've been up and talked with most of you about the Stormwater Master Plan in the last couple of years. We'll be coming back and talking about more of that as, as time goes on. How do we look at the citywide utility needs, looking at a risk base? So we kind of get away from the whoever's yelling the loudest today. That's where we're going. We're really trying to use data to drive where we're going to be spending money. So storm-wise there, we have a lot of work that's going on. Sanitary-wise, we've also got some longer-term planning efforts for new sewers, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit. But then we're also out doing more proactive inspection of our existing sewers to make sure that we're getting them repaired and rehabilitated before they actually fail. So we can avoid getting sewer operations involved with doing an emergency repair as much as we possibly can. We also do operational support, you know, think Sewer Enterprise Division, we support sewers. And that's probably our main division within Public Works that we interact with. A lot of times we're out helping troubleshoot, we're investigating, we're providing sometimes the repairs that they knew, they need a little write-up or a little drawing of kind of what, what's the repair they need to get done. And so we support that. We also interact with streets. Part of the stormwater conveyance system is the curb and gutter as it runs down the side of the street. That actually conveys the water. There's sometimes some storage there during events before it can get into the pipes. And so sometimes we have areas where it's not flowing very well or we, after it rains, we have just standing water in areas. And a lot of times it's because we just don't have a lot of grade, it's very flat. We get a little bump in the middle and it just holds water. Is there something we can do to work with them to maybe level something out? Or maybe we need to look at putting in, you know, a green inlet or actually tying, you know, running a sewer pipe back up and getting something tied in. We also interact with forestry. One of the big benefits of, one of the big, forestry is a great way and trees are a great way to actually manage stormwater as well. So working with them, making sure we have trees in the right areas that are helping get water infiltrated into the ground is a tremendous thing. And then solid waste, you know, the, the street sweeping, you won't think really a stormwater thing, but that was tied with our combined sewer overflow consent decree. We had to go through until we had those overflows closed, we actually had an accelerated amount of street sweeping. Because if you keep it off the street, it keeps it out of the storm sewer, which keeps it out of the streamways. And so we're trying the best within the consent decree to keep all of that debris And then finally, kind of going back to that public engagement and public, getting them involved with what we do, the Stormwater Infrastructure Advisory Committee is one and I'm sure most of you know the lady in the picture here, Gloria Hoffman, has been a very strong advocate for stormwater for a very long time within the City of Des Moines. This isn't about her, but she was our first chair for the first several years, first four years or so for the advisory committee. She's still on the committee. But it's ones where we have residents from around the city that are actively engaged and interested in learning about stormwater and providing feedback as we're working through the Stormwater Master Plan. They were engaged with that, you know, where are we going with this? How is this going to impact stuff? They're engaged with us, talking through the rebate programs, the Stormwater Best Management Practices Program, talking through just general stormwater issues. If they have a question, that's what some other people may have questions. Some of our educational videos have come from feedback from them. And so the picture here is actually the basin next to Gloria's house got dedicated a couple years ago and we were finally able to get up her, her memorial, wow, her sign, sorry. Yep. Honorary, there we go, for her and her late husband Lyle, because both of them were strong advocates for stormwater. Some of the new initiatives we have, talked a little about Stormwater Master Plan. Once again, citywide risk-based approach on, to stormwater, kind of with two different pieces to that. The first one being using the existing data we have. Where do we need some priority projects? We came up with about 15 projects for about $125 million and all throughout the city, dealing with whether it's capacity issues or dealing with flooding issues or dealing with some water quality issues, all the wide range of things that are there. The first four projects for those are under design right now. And I know we've had expanded funding to actually be able to move some of these projects forward. $125 million is a lot of money. It's really nothing compared to about $700 million in deferred maintenance that we'd identified when we're doing this, based off of kind of the age and types of pipes and infrastructure that we have out there. And we're approaching that by, we're actually hired, contracted closed caption televising companies, similar to our sewer operations do. They're generally dealing with more the reactive. We have a backup, we have a complaint, we have something going on. We needed to have some dedicated staff that were actually doing inspections of both the storm and sanitary. Storm, or sanitary's been going on for three or four years. This year, we just started doing storm. So we're able to start looking at those high-risk watersheds within the city and working down that list to get a better understand the condition, to understand, you know, how much debris and blockages do we have in there so that we can build or develop new projects that we feed back into a prioritization process that will actually then be included with those priority projects moving forward. So kind of a short-term, we know we need to do something and long-term, we know we need more data, so we're going to go collect that so we better know what we need to do in the future.
What are you, like, green?
Like, project locations defined? I see one up here.
Yep, so the, the blue-green lines that are there, those are kind of the outlines of the project areas that we've already defined within the priority projects. So that was stormwater sanitary. We've also been doing some planning over the last couple of years. We took, we worked very closely with economic development and where do we need new sewers to promote development within the city? Typically, these are on the fringes, primarily in the northeast, the southeast and the southwest. But the first project that we did that came out of here was actually right downtown, south of MLK, running from 11th to the west of the old Dico site to whatever is going to end up being there. But we needed additional capacity. This was a good exercise for us, though I know Jonathan's told me this story, but when market district was being discussed, we were like, uh-oh, we don't have enough sewer capacity. And we needed to get in there immediately and start a project so that we can increase the capacity there. So we're not slowing development in areas that maybe we didn't anticipate the need right this year, but we need to be looking forward a little bit to be prepared for those types of projects in the future. This one here is one I know Council Magado is, is well aware of and I know he's been advocating for, for many years. So at southeast 14th, east of there along Army Post is an area that until sewers are in place, there's very little development's going to occur. You need sewers, you need water, you need roads. Everything else will kind of follow behind there. But if sewer's not there, because they typically run by gravity, they're probably the hardest one to get installed. So typically they go in first and then drive the development in the area. This project is currently under construction right now. And then once this one's completed, I know we're still looking at where the next one's going to be, but I think probably east of there, there's the, the industrial park or the, the new development east of there, I think is probably going to be the next area. Yeah. But we meet every year with the economic development folks to make sure, did something new pop up that we need to either add to the list or maybe change the prioritization of the projects that we have included in the plan. Levy improvements. I know we've been up talking about the levy improvement program as a whole. There's been a lot of money spent in the downtown area to date. We put a little hold on it once we made it down to southeast 14th, so everything down through southeast Des Moines, with the exception of what's being included in the southeast connector, that we've been working with the core for the past 18 months on kind of a risk process to really identify what we need to do with those projects. Lot of work and a lot of time there. I wanted to focus on one specific one. I know Steve showed the one out on Sailor Road near Ding Darling Park, that roller gate. This is not that one, this is actually at George Flag and Fluor. This is called a panel closure. It looks like a great big erector set when they put it up. I honestly, thankfully, have not seen them put it up yet because we haven't had a major flood yet since I've been here. But this is a, this is a challenging piece of infrastructure to put up. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort. And so it actually makes our decision-making when we're doing flood management not ideal because we leave this up maybe longer than it needs to be. Because typically, the rivers come up, they don't normally come up and go down. Did you come up and go down, and go up and down? When there's rain in the watershed, once everything's saturated, those river levels come up and go down to the point that, do we need to take it down? Can we take it down? Well, as long as it takes to put it up, it's usually left it longer in place. And so the decision was made, we're going to change it out with a roller gate, which looks like a big rail car on, basically a train track there, that in about 30 minutes, you can take and close that versus the six to eight hours to get something like this installed. So it gives us more operational flexibility on when are we able to open it back up. And then, you know, this is right by Waterworks Park, there's Waterworks Administration Office, and a lot of businesses down there that are severely, not severely, but they're hampered in their efforts on what they do day-to-day and access to them whenever this closure's there. So, that is currently under construction right now. It seems like everything's under construction right around there right now, with between Fluor and the gate closure. But when this is completed later this year, this will be a good addition to Public Works in the city.
Be completed at the same time? The Fluor reconstruction and then this?
I don't-
At that area?
I honestly don't know on the Fluor reconstruction. I'm going to guess probably not. I think this one's a much more contained project, and once it's in, they have a very short, they only have a four-month window to have it closed. So I think the levy closure will probably be completed before Fluor.
I thought Fluor was never going to be done.
I didn't want to say that, but- And then, you know, back to kind of some stormwater education, you know, we're doing it for many different things. We're doing it for programs, we're doing it for projects. And one thing within the group I've really been promoting is anybody that is willing and able to get out and do a video, work with our communications office. It's been tremendous from my six years here, from what we had when I started with the couple staff members here, to the expanded staff that they have there and the support they can have, to allow us to get the message out, what we're doing with programs, what we're doing with projects, and just educating the public on a lot of different things. Whether it's Kaylee talking about site evaluations, or Erica talking about rain gardens, or Keith talking about one of the projects on Four Mile Creek at East 34th, on what are they for, how are they benefiting, why should I care, and maybe why should I, or why should I look for more information, and where you can find it. And so once again, sewers, a long time, we're out of sight, out of mind, and this sort of effort I think has really helped us kind of battle that image, so that we're out there and educating the public on what we do. And then finally, we talked about the stormwater quality, or we talked about the stormwater best management practices. One of the practices in there is called soil quality restoration. This is the deep tineration, compost addition, and overseeding that everybody can take advantage of as part of the main program, the full program that we have. After 2018 storm, 47th and Holcomb was identified as kind of a priority project area, and they actually have an enhanced level of that program. Instead of 50% reimbursement up to 2,000, they can get up to 100% reimbursement up to 4,000. Jonathan says, how successful are we with that program? And we're like, we're not. We've had about 11% of the residents, 100% reimbursement to do stormwater projects there have taken advantage of that program. And so we said, let's find a way where we can improve that and say, we've done everything we can in these priority watersheds. And so we did some research, and there were some others. Polk County, Johnston and Clive have all done kind of a batch-and-build program, kind of based on some work that John Swanson over at Polk County has been doing with the more edge-of-field practices. And so they've been doing some batch-and-build soil quality restoration, where the city hires the contractor versus the resident, and then we go in and we just knock out a whole bunch of them. It does a lot of great things, economy of scale, we got some amazing pricing, you know, square foot pricing, that if an individual was doing it, they'd probably be paying double, about half of what they'd been getting. And then it lets us go through and do a whole bunch of practices. The other thing, we reached out to Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, applied for a grant, we got $100,000 from them, which we paired up with $100,000 of city funding. And we really hit it hard in those priority watersheds, which are the green dots in the upper left. Well, the problem was, is our pricing was too good, and we almost had to have, we had more than half of the residents had to sign up if we were going to spend all the money. So last fall, we did almost 200 of them in those priority watersheds. And then this spring, we did some more education, or we did some more outreach, and we opened it up to Closest Creek, which in the Stormwater Master Plan was the number-one watershed where we needed to do some improvements. And then we did almost another 200 within Closest Creek. And so total, I think we did 427 applications, whereas in a typical year, we do about 100 stormwater BMP practices. So we really increased it, focused on an area we knew we wanted to have some improvement, and then opened it up as we're working down through the priority watersheds from the Stormwater Master Plan. Brook Run, yes. So the Brook Run project, I know it's not technically our project, but I know they're doing stream stabilization out there as part of a watershed flood protection grant that they got through the state, that Polk County is leading that one. They're actually doing a, I think about 10 stream bank stabilization projects, that Brook Run was one of their priority ones that had been identified. There's a lot of severe erosion on private property there. It makes it difficult for the city to go in and restore and repair that, but because this is grant funding coming through a larger project, Polk County has taken the lead on that with us supporting it. I think they're getting close, I think they're, they've been working on getting everybody signed up and getting easement signed in there, and so I think this fall, they should be going to bid.
Go through Polk County Conservation?
Polk County Public Works.
Public Works.
And with that? Yes.
So with all the recent rains, does your staff go out and drive the streets to look for stormwater catch basins, or not catch basins, inlets?
The inlets?
That are clogged?
That is, that's one of the sewer operations functions is going through, especially in areas we know we've had historical problems. They are driving around, and they have a ditch crew that goes through and clears everything out. But yes, anytime I'm out, or my staff is out, or anybody's out, a lot of what we're getting, I mean, there's, what, 20,000 or so inlets within the city? There's no way to go do that, you know, systematically. A lot of what we're doing is we're getting feedback from, you know, residents with, through CitySource, or phone calls into the call center, or even, you know, to council. I know I've got a lot of different things been sent to me and to the division from different members of council, and so a lot of that comes in that way as well. So typically, it has to have been one that we've had a history of problems in the past where it's plugging up. But yeah, I mean, especially like in the fall time, and there's lots of leaves, and we get rain then, and stuff gets plugged up pretty quickly. You know, we don't want, really want residents going out and try to unplug it themselves, but we know they do that sometimes, so we'd much prefer them calling it in or sending it in through CitySource.
I was trying to give you a softball there to-
Yep.
That is really complaint-driven, isn't it?
It is, it is primarily complaint-driven.
People are out on their walk, and there's water, just create a My Mobile DSM, and-
Yep.
But you've got a couple streets with sycamore trees-
Yep.
Polk Boulevard and Thompson Avenue, are those like, kind of your go-to, okay, there's a storm and we gotta-
Once again, if we've had, if we have a history of problems, those are proactively looked at more than just complaint-driven, yes.
Thanks.
Following up on Carl's comment on a much smaller scale, when I was on plan and zoning, an observation was, when we require developers to install their private storm sewer basins, there's no mechanism to verify that those basins are functioning. And I recall, under a heavy rain, and they have since corrected these, but Wesley on Grand and DMU on Grand, both of their basins, which were huge bases, were non-functioning. On the Wesley, the maintenance person removed the plate that reduces the amount of water, so all the stormwater just ran right through and took a house out. So the city ended up paying for that house. And DMU's basin was completely silted full. Something I'd like for you to think about and maybe work with Cody Christensen's department, might there be a mechanism whereby basins of a certain size on private property, those property owners are required to have those basins inspected, maybe once every other year by an engineer, paid for by the property owner, so we're not adding to the city burden? But there's a, there's a skilled licensed set of eyes looking to make sure they're working.
Yeah, I know that's an ongoing challenge that we have. I know we've been working on improving that. I know a couple of years ago, when we updated the development ordinances, we did some enhanced requirements that run through Permit Development Center and Cody Christensen's group, and engineering that does those reviews to make sure that everything is put in and installed correctly. You're right, as they sit and they operate, basins fill in with silt. The outlet structures get plugged or modified, trees start growing in them. There's a lot of things that actually make it so that they're less effective. One of the initiatives I have in my group is every summer when I have interns, we do identify a portion of those to go out and verify. They're not surveying it, it's mostly a visual inspection, but looking at the inlets, looking at, is there obvious silting that maybe we need to come take a closer look at? Or we have vegetation that's not supposed to be growing someplace? Are there ton of garbage and stuff in here that needs to get taken care of? So between having enhanced requirements, not just for installation, but ongoing maintenance that we have in the ordinances, and then going out and doing that, once again, it will probably turn into, we've had complaints or problems multiple times, and then we'll do some enhanced inspection there. So, yeah, I highly, I think, I know Jonathan's in support of that as well, and he's been pushing our group to do more of it. But going out and doing those inspections on the existing stormwater controls, the basins and everything that are out there, to make sure that they're functional, and they're not impacting people downstream, like I know the Des Moines one did, so.
Thank you.
All right. And next, I'd like to introduce Shane McQuillan, Forestry.
Members of council, Shane McQuillan, City Forester. So we're going to kick this off with going through some of our operational activities we do. So pruning, obviously a big one. We get through hundreds of different pruning events throughout the year. Anytime we have a call out to a property, for whatever reason it is, we have an inspector go out and look at that and see what the issue is. We'll also look down that street for the first block or two and see if there's any other pruning that needs to take place while we're there. And we recently just completed, we recently just completed, going through the whole city, it's taken us about, I think, four or five years, and pruning all the 5-inch to 10-inch trees that we had on our tree software. So what that does is it makes for a much healthier tree into the future. So you see some of those trees out there, and they've got huge, big double leaves, or they look all kind of crazy. It's because someone didn't prune them when they were young, and they could have just been about as big as my finger and snipped it off. So we started with the 5 to 10-inch trees, we've been through the whole city, a lot more smaller trees in the downtown area, so it was the last area to go, and then we're going to, we're circling back and starting on our inventory from the 0 to 5-inch now, so we're going to go back through and sort of catch the ones we've been planting in that five years that we've been doing that pruning. Planting, we plant anywhere between 1,000 to 2,000 trees. Recently, it's been more around about 1,500 trees a year. So that, what that is doing is, you know, we lose through senescence, old age of trees, about 600 to 800 a year, just in any normal, you know, old age of a tree, and it's sort of got to its time. That doesn't include storms, or, you know, the recent Emerald Ash Bora program that we've been going through, where we've lost about 8,000 trees of that. So, plant trees with lots of different people, primarily Trees Forever, Urban Ambassadors, another nonprofit we work with, Parks and Rec, many different organizations out there. Storm response, not, don't need to really let people know too much about that this season. I checked in with my section chief, so the way the forestry structure works, you've got your city forester, you've got a section chief who oversees 13 arborists that are going doing the day-to-day work. When you see our trucks out there, our chipper trucks, bucket trucks, that type of thing. And then Dan Just, our project manager, Dan's overseeing a lot of our contractual work, working with the nonprofits and running those types of programs. So storm response, even so far this year, we've had over 300 different call-ins through the call center, he tickets, emails, that type of thing. It's been a busy, busy spring and summer. So they are 24/7, a phone call come in, it doesn't matter when. The night watchman that Steve was alluding to, they'll decide whether it needs forestry to come in and sort of check it out, and they'll come call the crew in and come attend to that, to that situation all throughout the year. And stealing a little bit of Jim Thunder here, but also keep in mind when all these different departments are talking, everyone, most everyone that's up here and doing these is also doing snow as well, so you're kind of going to double function there. You know, we're doing the storms in the spring, summer, fall, and then also, you know, straight into the winter as well. New initiatives, and we've got a few of them. Homegrown DSM, so as you, I'm sure all well aware, we've given away a lot of tiny trees, small trees from the state nursery, 60,000 to 70,000. The city as a whole has 50,000 trees on our inventory, so we've basically put a whole another urban forest into private property, which is, you know, a great thing for our residents, a great thing for our urban canopy. Some people are running out of rooms, so we figured out another way for them to help us out. We'll drop off some trees, and they can help us grow them, and then we'll bring those back out in a year or two and plant them into the neighborhood. Ideally right outside their house, but it could be anywhere close, or we incorporate that into a different, another planting that we've got. So currently, we have 28 residents fostering 153 trees, and 27 of these trees have been planted into the city's canopy to date. So once they, and that's been a lot of education as well, you know, how to make a small tree survive through the sometimes brutal Iowa winters. So that program's going really good. Arborist apprenticeship, this has been a big lift for the forestry department, and working with HR very closely, they've been an awesome help with this. But often when we apply to, even though we have really good conditions at the city, we pay well, good benefits, we sometimes really struggle to get people to apply for these jobs. So Jonathan's idea was, let's start an arborist apprenticeship. Happy to say, this is up and running. So our last two arborist positions, you could apply, any one of you in fact, if you wanted to, you don't have to have any former experience. So the cool thing with that is, you know, we'll normally get, you know, some good candidates, but it can be pretty tough sometimes, just depending on what's happening out there in the employment environment. So with this one, we've had, ironically, we've had really good, strong arborist candidates the two times we have run it, so we haven't had to kick off the apprenticeship program, but it's a really good problem to have. We've also had up to 70 people applying for the job, and out of those non-arborists, we've had a good, solid 5 to 10 that my section chief is, he's, you know, he's not easy to please when it comes to finding good workers, he knows what he's looking for. And he was, you know, very emotional, enthusiastic about, you know, two or three of these people that haven't really touched trees before in their life. So it's been a really good success, and we'll be probably pushing that out as a department to some other areas where we, you know, can struggle at times to find good staff. So that's been really good. We have cut off a little bit there, we've got Tree of the Month launching this month in August, so every month, we're going to look at a different tree and have people talk about it and explain some of the different characteristics of it, why they like it, why they don't like it. Encourage any of you to participate if you feel like it. We've got actually two of our externs up there through the STEAM externship program, where teachers that want to kind of, you know, do something different through the summer, will come and work with the city or different organizations. And the idea is that they learn a bunch of different schools, we get someone who is, you know, pretty talented already, and then they can take that back to the classroom, and we've had some long-lasting relationships through that. We still work with plenty of our STEAM externs doing different projects around local schools. So Tree of the Month. Ask an arborist. We talk to our arborists about something they're passionate about, and they come and talk about different things that they want the public to know about. So this is another big plug for Youssef and the communications department as a whole. I mean, I've only been here, you know, coming up 10 years, but seeing the communication department go from one person to the well-oiled machine it is now, and we do, they do an amazing job with these videos. Our arborists love it, they get out there, they get to talk about something they're passionate about, it could be mulching a tree, how to prune in spring, planting, that type of thing. So we've got a new video on the way to, the correct way to mulch a tree in the works. Gravel Bed Nursery. So we got our Inflation Reduction Act grant a couple of years ago, 2.5 million, and we've been busy planting trees around all the different neighborhoods. And one way to value-add is this gravel bed nursery, it started up in Minnesota, so we're close to the ground zero of where all the knowledge comes from, and we actually visited a couple of those places to see how they're doing it. And the idea is that you take a cheaper tree that doesn't cost as much, you put it in this mix of pea, gravel, and sand, and you can see over there on the right, the big Santa Claus-looking beard of roots. You get a much more vigorous tree that's going to stand up to, you know, the last couple of years, we've been pretty dry, we got really lucky this year, it's been a great spring, summer for, one aspect of our operations is not so good for the other one, but you get this really vigorous tree coming out of that. So that's a really cool program that they're doing, where we can take a tree about half the price, put it in this gravel bed in the spring, grow it through to the fall, and it comes out with a much better chance of survival. All those tiny little roots up there, the other ones that are doing- All those tiny little roots up there, the other ones that are doing all the chemical exchange and really a lot of the work to get a tree up and running. And your bigger ones are usually structure ones. Happy to tour that for anyone wants to have a look at that. And we don't have it up there, but we also have our private to private inspections on, that was a council-driven project. So that is up and running too. We're about 50, 50 requests into that where homeowners, if they have an issue with, you know, a person next door to them or something like that, will come and look at the tree and, you know, send out a letter on that as well. So I think that about wraps it up for me.
Is this here in Des Moines?
This, I believe, is just outside in Johnson. So we're working with Trees Forever and they looked around and found a contractor that could help get this kicked up and started off. But ultimately, you know, there's, there's people go both ways, spring and fall in the arborist world. Planting fall is actually a really nice thing in the Midwest because you're escaping that extreme heat that we have to get through with so much watering. But we'll be looking at developing these and potentially creating our own ones on some city land to bring these trees in. And it's more of a trial project, but you know, you've got about 200 trees there and pretty much, you know, 99% of them survived through and just looking really good, so.
When does the fall planting begin for trees?
Generally near the end of September, start of October.
Okay. And in the downtown tree boxes, if there's a dead tree, do you need a complaint about that or do you need a ticket or do you just know where the dead trees are?
It's a great question and, you know, with 50,000 trees, we prefer people to send their tickets in and do that. We, we all know where they are, the ones that we've planted recently through Trees Forever watering them and going past them and seeing them. But a lot of our work is reactive because 50,000 trees and about 30,000, 13 arborists, you know, it's a big tree to arborist ratio, so we, so we're more proactive. So please do send the tickets in, yeah, through the, through the mobile app, emails, that type of thing.
Who, who takes care of the parks and cemeteries? Is that, is that our parks department or?
Parks department.
You guys don't do the dead trees there?
Ah, so it's a mix, like overall, as far as I understand it, and other people might, Jonathan might know better than me, but cemeteries is part of parks. But let's say a, you know, they're basically a, an agreement between us. So a certain sized tree, you know, fails in the park system, if they, if they can handle it, the smaller stuff, they'll, they'll go and do it. But if they need assistance, they'll come and ask us. Or if there's a big storm, for instance, Glendale Cemetery, Public Works was in there for, you know, quite a few weeks cleaning that stuff out and we go backwards and forth. So it's, it's a mix is what I would say, but mostly they, they are governing and looking after those properties until they need assistance with more technical.
The dead trees that are in Pioneer Park and Ewing Park, those are the parks department, not your responsibility is what you're telling me or?
Yeah, so if they're newly planted trees.
No, they're, they're old trees.
Okay, they're older ones. So in that, that case, depending on what they are, parks will work with us or tell us about them and, you know, we'll schedule them out and work with them to get those trees down. So it is definitely joint because.
Do you need a complaint from a resident or just from the parks department or how's that?
They let us know pretty quickly when there's, you know, an issue with trees in the park system for sure.
Thank you.
And yeah, I'm gonna introduce Jim Scott.
Could you update, where are we at with the Urban Forest Master Plan?
My apologies, I've got that written up there to mention too. So Urban Forestry Master Plan, part of that whole pruning program is due to that Urban Forestry Master Plan and council adopting that. So we got, you know, a couple of victory addresses for that, which was great. And we've got proactive pruning for the first time in our, that I can remember. As far as that Urban Forestry Master Plan, I would say we are looking good. I would, you know, part of that is in effect because of the Inflation Reduction Act grant has like allowed us to keep building that and, you know, keeping up with the numbers of planting. But we're still, we're still a little ways away from the, from the end goal of getting into that canopy coverage at the moment. We do have a couple more tools that have come. When the Urban Forestry Master Plan was, was created, we didn't have any really good LiDAR data or geospatial coverage. Now we do actually have, you know, solid numbers from two different ones. We have one through our own software and then a national one was created where you could go and look at like which trees have been removed for the last six years, what's been, what's been planted. So now we have actually solid data. So we're actually revisiting that for a little bit to see how that fits in with the Urban Forestry Master Plan because that data wasn't really available or it ran on a 10-year cycle through DNR, but it was sort of cumbersome to get your hands on. It wasn't like freely available, which now we can, I can send it to you after, after this and you can have a look at exactly what we've got out there, so. Yeah. So we, we're doing good strides, I would say, in the, in the next five years of the Urban Forestry Master Plan, you know, making sure we have enough budget for it is probably gonna be, be one of the challenges moving forward.
Well, that's a tough one to catch up on, isn't it? I mean, if you don't plan on this year, we don't plan enough in the, in five years, you can't catch up.
Yeah, so for the time being, American Rescue Plan, Opera Funding and Inflation Reduction Act Funding has kept us, you know, really steady and on track as far as the plantings. But, you know, the strategy going forward into the next sort of two to five years is definitely on our horizon for, you know, what are we gonna do? And obviously, there's a, you know, different financial landscape from when we started that to what we're in at the moment, so. But you're right, it is hard, it is hard to catch up for sure, yeah. Yeah, so I'll be probably back in front of you in a couple of years' time as the, as the funding situation, you know, with the, with the grants that we've got. So we'll be looking out for other opportunities as well.
It's also encouraging our citizens to plant their own trees, like the tiny little trees and keep doing more of their own within their own yards.
Yeah, which LiDAR data should be able to.
Are, is, is your department involved with the Million Tree projects that?
Yes, so there's a local initiative called the Million, Million, I don't know the title exactly, but Million Tree Initiative or something like that. Really cool thing. Yes, we are involved through that. We're on the, on the, you know, one of the key partners in that through, we've had a long relationship with Leslie Burkes and I think it's Larry James. So we're solid partners on that and obviously was one of the, the largest contributors to the growing the urban canopy in the urban areas in the state of Iowa. So, yep, we're really on the forefront of that. Okay.
Well, good morning, Mayor Bozen, city council members. My name is Jim Scott. I'm the operations manager for Streets Division. I'm presenting this morning in Sarah's absence. So we have five sections in the Streets Division and the numbers bolster up differently depending upon the time of the year and what we have going. We shift resources when we need to. If we have something going on in inlays, pothole patching, mowing, herbicide spraying, rideaway support, we will shift resources from one section to another. And if it gets that large, then we'll work with other divisions to shift resources to get the adequate numbers to do what needs to be done. You guys know pothole patching is an ongoing nightmare, especially in springtime. You can never get away from it. We are working on innovation and means and methods to keep up with this better and there's more to come on that. Painting, which is our hot mixed asphalt section, they do right now, we're doing mainly inlays, large inlays, small inlays, micro-surfacing. Micro-surfacing is part of our pavement preservation program. It's ongoing. We're getting more innovative in that by additional training, having the manufacturers come out, do hands-on with the people on the ground. So the, the quality of the product is better and it lasts longer because it's a more efficient coverage. We're working on that continually and trying to adjust our means and methods so they're with the highest quality standard in the industry. Concrete pavement repair, we're, we're trying to focus on streets where we can raise the PCI that might have one or two panels on it that are bad, but otherwise a street would be in good condition. So we're trying to focus on that. Here's the trade-off though. When you do that, your numbers go down because you're not able to do five or six or seven panels on a street. So you're constantly moving, getting locates, moving in, getting traffic control support and, but it is raising the condition of the street. So that's a positive thing.
How does that, how do you qualify for that? Because there's, I mean, there's lots of panels that I could go and report and would make a substantial difference on some of our main roadways. So do I just call, call it in to you guys and just say, hey, I see some different panels on these residential streets that if it's all concrete, how does that work?
So, yeah, that's a good question, Joe. Right now, what we have is we have a backlog. If we got a complaint right now, unless it was a traffic hazard or a safety concern, it's gonna go on a list and by the time we get to it's gonna be late fall, early spring. That's how far backlog we are right now. We are trying to do a better job at pavement preservation through strip sealing and crack sealing and that's ongoing. We are looking at changing some initiatives. I had a meeting with Jonathan about some of our means and methods and working with some of my old counterparts at Iowa DOT on some of the means and methods that we used there for years and years that streamline strip sealing and crack sealing and reduces the amount of man-hours and increases the lineal feed of product that you're able to put out.
So do I just call it in or?
Yeah, you could call it in and we'll go out and look at it. If it is a safety concern or if it's a traffic hazard, we'll put it at the top of the list. And of course, you've got a pretty good resource sitting right behind me here.
Yeah, no, I, yes, I understand. And you guys have been doing a fantastic job. I mean, I have called some of those in, but there's just some, there's some portions of some main that, that if we fixed it, it would, you know, I look at South Union, there's some, there's some patching that we could do on some panels that would help that tremendously.
Sure, sure. So the rideaway section, there's a lot of stuff that's going on there now that you guys may or may not know about. We purchased a new 309 CAT excavator that has grade control. Parts in it that you go in and you dig down to the outlet of a flared end section or the outlet of a pipe, you enter that grade into the CAT, then you go to the other end to the far inlet and you enter that grade into the CAT, you wheel the distance and you enter that in and it calculates the grade for you and digs a grade. So it's streamlining that, it's given us a better product, we're able to keep up better. We also have rolled this into our recycle program. So any material that comes off our rideaways, if it's reusable, it's going to Hartford, it's gonna be farmed out, put into a pile and we're gonna reuse it instead of buying stuff from vendors that costs a lot of money. Rideaway support also helps with any kind of events that's happened around the city if they need barricades or if they need some kind of traffic devices or trucks to block a road, they would get a hold of rideaway support and we'd work through that. Road sides, this is kind of part of the mowing section and they're doing a lot of stuff now too. We're trimming back vegetation for site restrictions and where signs can't be seen, that could be a traffic hazard. We're mowing our rideaways. We also administer the mowing contracts and keep up with everything to make sure that they're being done adequately before we release their payment. Lot of folks are being more proactively trained in all of these areas of street maintenance and I'm gonna touch more on that here momentarily.
So going back to that, do you have a current list that you do the rideaway? Because I know that, you know, well, I'll just use Thomas Beck Road for instance. It's Josh's Ward. I've called multiple times every year to get that trim back off of the curb. If I don't call, doesn't get trimmed back.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, you know, you can't see the fire hydrants, you can't see anything through there. Craig Park, we do a pretty good job of clearing back the rideaway of our park, but the rest of the roadway, it's, it's pretty bad.
Okay, I'll, I'll take.
Jonathan and I have talked about that road.
Yep, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
We are trying to be more proactive and we're using more seven-month laborers in this capacity. Of course, the ongoing training process, you have, they have to be adequately trained, they gotta be covered upright with a proper PPE. And we gotta make sure that what they're doing is not only quality work and efficient, but it's, they're doing it safely too. And then we share that information and hopefully you're going to see a more adequate response to some of these things rolling forward. New initiatives that we have in streets, our salt conservation program, I don't know what any of you have heard about this, but I come from Iowa DOT. I spent 13 years as their area supervisor at a Grimes, which ran basically the whole west side of the Des Moines metro area. We used a spray bar system which activates the salt and they had a policy that all salt had to be pre-wetted because without it being pre-wetted, it don't activate. So 60 to 70% of that salt, if it's sitting on the ground dry, either gets blown off by traffic or blown off by wind. So it never activates. So you think that you're not using enough material and people keep putting down more material, still doesn't change the situation.
Does it activate if it snows though? If it gets wet by snow?
Well, once the snow starts melting and it gets wet, but also the temperature threshold plays into that too. So with the spray bar, the system that I had at DOT, the spray bar sprayed the street, the ZV spinner put the dry salt on the wet road, which activated the bottom of the salt. What I did here was I worked with Henderson. We came up with a new system where that spinner throws that salt right under that spray bar. So every granular of salt is being wet either with brine or brine liquid calcium chloride mix and it's activating almost instantly. It's gonna drastically reduce the amount of salt use that we use and it reduces the amount of equipment and man-hours that we need on the infrastructure, which also will reduce our risk because the less hours you're exposed, the less exposure, it's gonna reduce your risk.
That's new? Like how long, how long is that?
I come here two years ago, so I started that when I come here two years ago and we've got, at the end of this season, we should have six trucks retrofit it that way. Now there is a, there's an upfront cost to outfit the trucks, but the backend cost is your savings never goes away and, and it's fiscally responsible and environmentally responsible. You're gonna put less salt into the tributaries and the waterways. I mean, all the way around, it's gonna be a better deal. Concrete and asphalt recycling program, we have partnered now and we're letting contracts yearly or bi-yearly dependent upon need to where every bit of asphalt or pavement that comes off of our infrastructure does not go to a dump, which they call, charge you 70 bucks per ton to dump it. It goes to Hartford now and we let a contract, we separate it out, we keep it in clean piles and then we crush it. We haul it to our supply yard and we use that back on the infrastructure. Concrete inch and a half minus limestone that's mined out of the ground cost is $28.10 a ton delivered. This cost is six bucks to crush. So there's a drastic.
Where's that list, where's that at on Hartford? Is that right off of East 14th there? Is that our, is that ours?
Yeah, if you head off East 14th, it's down there about a mile on the right-hand side, used to be like a waste.
Like the old brick? Like the old brick yards?
Yep, yep.
Oh, so we have that now?
Yep, yep, we do.
Okay.
And it's secure. We put up new security fences, our gates, and that's a full-time recycle and dump. And like I said, if we take dirt or topsoil off the infrastructure, we're not going to just haul it there and waste it or haul it to a landfill. If it's reusable, it's going to be reused.
Excellent.
CDL trainer and testing. We now have, our CDL tester has went through his week of schooling. He's now shadowing at Ankeny DOT station. As soon as he completes that, he will be a state-certified tester. What that means is when we can't get CDL-trained people, we can train them ourselves. Our trainer trains them, they roll them to the tester, he puts them through the testing, which is on a certified course that DOT certifies. We have to give them a GIS map of this. And once they do that, they take that document to Ankeny, they take their picture and give them a license. So we're, I mean, you can call Ankeny right now and they'll tell you they can't get you in for three weeks. This eliminates that. They just walk up there, hand them the document, they take their picture and hand them a license. The only trade-off on that is every tester, you have to do six people per year. So if we have two testers, we have to do twice that many. So right now, we're just going with one, but that's a positive program. Training Thursdays, this was birthed out of the Winter Maintenance Committee, and we wanted to proactively reduce the amount of time that it takes for new employees and seven-month labor employees coming on to learn the system and learn the safety requirements and all the technology. And a lot of vendors have partnered with us on best practices on a lot of different equipment. We have a pretty large library of training videos now that new employees, when they onboard, they'll watch these that pertain to whatever section they're in. And with that, I'll defer to Adam Smith, Department Operations.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. You've heard from us now for an hour and a half, so we'll try to wrap this up quickly so you can get out of here and get on with your day. I'm going to talk to you about some initiatives that the whole department does. These folks have talked about what they do. We're going to talk about collective operations now. The first one is obviously snow removal. You're all aware of what we do there. You know, we're out in the street before snowfalls, putting down brine. Once the snow starts, we're out there on the routes until it's over, until they're cleared, and then we move into the districts. Past several years, you know, we, once the snowfall stops, we're usually able to get everything cleared and opened up in 24 hours, so. Debris removal, so as has been mentioned, forestry is our first responders there. They're in the middle of the night when a storm happens. They get the road opened up, they push it off to the side, and then they move on to their other jobs of taking care of damaged trees or hangers. At that point, our street cleaning folks come in and run the operation. If it's large enough, they'll call in sewers and streets to support them. For example, right now, we're doing this in the Fairgrounds neighborhood. You're aware of the microbursts or the stray line winds or whatever they're calling it that came through there last week. We started down there last Wednesday. To date, we've hauled 134 loads out of there. To give you a little perspective, last year, when the tornado came through the northwest side of town, we hauled 900 loads of material. And then when the duration hit town, we hauled 9,000 truckloads of debris. So we can scale this up or down as necessary. Flood control, you've heard some talk about this already, but when the flood starts, sewers are our first responders. They do a lot of stuff behind the scenes that you don't see with the pump stations. When we get to the stage on the flood plan where we're putting enclosures, you'll start to see that kind of activity. And ultimately, if it gets bad enough, we'll call in other divisions to help with that as well. There's a different plan, obviously, for river flooding. We follow our flood guide that kind of walks us through step by step by river level as opposed to when we get like a thunderstorm or a heavy rain event, that's more of a reactive phase, and we kind of deal with that as it comes. We don't have a book for that because we can't plan where it's going to happen. So we'll talk about some initiatives and we'll wrap this up for questions. As Jonathan alluded to, we're an accredited agency, one of four in the state of Iowa. We are due for re-accreditation this October. Site visitors will come and look at all of our practices, so we are busily going through our paperwork, updating everything, getting ready for their visit. As part of that, we developed a strategic plan in 2018. That's kind of one of the first things you have to do to become accredited. That's now getting a little aged, so we will start looking at that again this year and probably update that, just to put it on your radar. That'll be happening. I want to talk to you about some leadership training we do in-house. We have two separate leadership groups. The first is the Leadership Development Group. These are frontline employees who are currently not in a leadership position, but they're interested in either moving on or just learning more about leadership. So they meet two full days and four half-days, and they're trained in everything from, they take a personality assessment in the first day to learn their strengths and weaknesses. We have different departments come and talk to them about like HR procedures, legal claims, that kind of thing. We train them on in-house, public works stuff, and then we also just give them some general leadership types of training. There is a cohort of 16 people when this goes on. We've done it twice. We tell them upfront, taking this class is not a guarantee of promotion, right? You don't have to have this class to become a section chief, which is our first level. But we've filled the seats each time, and we've had way more applicants that we have spaces for, so we will probably run this again. This is not to take away either from the boot camp that HR runs. This is more of a public works-focused leadership training. And then last of all, we have the Principles of Leadership. I think I just told you that backwards. Didn't I? I heard some giggling back there. The one that I just told you was the Principles of Leadership. That's the people who want to become leaders, and you can see they're sitting in the classroom. So the Leadership Development Group is newly promoted first-line leaders. And we rolled this out three years ago, two, three years ago. We took everybody who'd been a section chief for five years or left, and they were on the group. Since that time, we've lost a couple to retirement. We've gained a couple to promotion, but they continue to meet on a monthly basis. We started out with them, too, talking about different departments, about what their roles are in timekeeping, what their roles are in HR management, that kind of thing. We threw in a department policies, talked them about the contract, labor relations, that kind of stuff. We've now rolled into more of a leadership study with these folks, so we'll read a book, we'll read a leadership book and talk about it. We've recently started the phase where they pick out a book and they read it and they talk to us about it. So it's an ongoing process to keep them engaged in leadership. Once you're on the group, the only way to get off is to retire. So they're going to be on there for a while, hopefully, but we continue to get new people rolling in. And I think quickly, that is all I'm going to talk to you about. So pending any of your questions, we'll wrap this up.
Are there any questions?
I just want to say what Ray John, the courts does. Jonathan always responds to everything, as do the others that I email, so thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to end our discussion this morning, saying each of these work groups could have gone on for 40 minutes to an hour by themselves. There's a lot that goes on, and we have just hit the highlights like skipping a rock across a lake. And that being said, I'm incredibly proud to lead a large work group. We're 425 people during the peak season, but staffed with solid leadership at every level through the way. And we recruit and we manage to retain, in a tough job market, quality people, and I think that goes a long way to delivering the services that the residents expect. We keep the residents and their concerns foremost on our mind, that we work for them through you all and the city as a whole, but it's a, it is a pleasure doing what we get to do every day.
On behalf of the council, I can, I think, say thank you and all of your team because you really are the ones that touch every one of our citizens and make this city work. We have so many dedicated people throughout all the departments, but thank you for giving an insight of the depth of all the stuff underneath that goes underneath the ground, really, and up above with the trees. But again, thanks again for the work and thanks for the report. And with that, I would say we will reconvene for our regular meeting at 5:00 PM, so thank you.
Great, thank you.